Good evening, everyone. The May 2016, excuse me, May 16, 2019, Yakima School District is called to order. Will you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Ready, begin. Thank you. On behalf of Yakima School District, we want to welcome Mayor Coffey, Deputy Mayor Gutierrez, and all of the council members, and Mr. Moore, thank you for being here, and also the city staff. It's great to see some old friends out in the audience today, so it reminds me of some of the work that we did back way back in, way long time ago, right? So, welcome, everybody. I do have to say that Board Member Fonce and Reverend Davis were not able to make it today. They had emergencies that came up at the last minute, so they're not going to join us today. So, I just wanted to say that the board is pleased that you have joined us today, and we're excited about this opportunity to engage in a conversation and how we can continue the partnership that we started here a few years ago. We're very excited about continuing that and to, in fact, improve and strengthen that partnership. We want to thank you for all the work that you do on behalf of Yakima and our community. We know that it's very, very challenging work, and we thank you for doing that. We do understand the challenges that Yakima faces and the hard decisions that you make every day, and we understand that, and we know that together we can combine our resources, our ideas, and so forth, to provide to our community and to make our community a great place for everyone. So, once again, welcome, everybody, and thank you for being here today. So, we're just going to go ahead and jump right into the agenda. Today's primarily going to be discussion in terms of eight agenda items, or seven agenda items, excuse me, and basically, we want to have that discussion about our partnership and how we can, again, to improve and to maintain that going forward. So, first of all, on the agenda, we do have the Yakima School District Policy Governance Model that we would like to discuss, and Board Member Martha Rice is going to lead that discussion. Martha?
Thank you, Raymond.
Yes.
I don't know that we've ever had an opportunity to share with City Council what policy governance is, and we wanted to take this opportunity to kind of, oh dear, you're going to make me do this? Thank you. It would require me to do two things at once. It's too late in the day for that. Policy governance is a governance model that was developed by Dr. John Carver. Some of you may have read of him or heard of him, and it clarifies the roles between the board and management, or between the board and the superintendent, in our case, to get results and to delegate activities and actions, and to delegate authority to management, and then hold management accountable for the results of those responsibilities. It's different than the normal model that a lot of school boards and you as City Council use. We used to use kind of a blended model, and there were a lot of components to policy governance that was in the old model that we had, but then, back in 2007, we made the switch to make it more of a formal adoption. You can see there, in the second bullet, the definition on the Carver Governance website of policy governance. The board focuses on larger issues and works in a more strategic manner, and delegates the operations of the district to the superintendent, and then evaluates the superintendent and the accomplishments made by the district based on those delegations. As I said, in 2006, we kind of formalized long-held beliefs and ways of operating that the school board used into a more formal process, a formal framework, that it makes the board responsible for answering to the community expectations that the community has of students, for student achievement, citizenship, and character, skills, and physical health, and those are all expectations that we have, that were true then, and are still true, based on surveys that we've done of the community. And so, it kind of reinforces the process that we're using. The framework was adopted in 2007. At that time, we created new governance policies that specifically address a variety of areas. These are policies that we didn't have in place before. Before, we had the typical three-inch binder that was, you know, about five inches thick, and the board kind of was responsible for all of those policies. There were some operational procedures in there that the district was responsible for, but it just didn't make sense to have the board responsible for this vast amount of policies when we can kind of pare that down and make that more generic. So, we also developed a monitoring calendar, because the process is that the superintendent provides us with monitoring reports based on delegations that we've made to him, and those roll throughout the year. We develop frameworks for those monitoring reports, and we will have, we have monitoring reports at every one of our board meetings, sometimes more than one. This style of governance focuses the board on policies that, as I said, pertain to four major areas, and lay out specific responsibilities for the board, and we define that as the "what." What is it that the board, the community expects and the board wants the superintendent to accomplish, the district to accomplish? So, the superintendent with his staff and the district staff then create the "how," and so they have a lot of operational procedures that we transferred all of this big book, most of this big book, over to the superintendent, and all of those policies that were in there became operational procedures as well. So, our policies are broken out into four areas. The results, which are all of those expectations or outcomes that we expect the superintendent to accomplish, we call those the "ends." There is a superintendent responsibility section called, we call that executive limitations. Policy governance is not so, as prescriptive as other governance models. Our policies are framed sort of in the double negative. It makes it a little awkward to read them sometimes, because you have to translate in your head, but they would be along the lines of, "The superintendent shall not fail to do something or other." So, we create a fence, sort of, with that language, and the superintendent then is allowed to operate within that fence. If we think that the superintendent needs, or if he or she thinks that they need more latitude, then we adjust the language and bump the fence out a little bit, or if we think that we need to kind of rein in a little bit, then we pull the fence in a little bit. But anything that needs to be done within that fence, the superintendent has the latitude to do. There is a section on board-superintendent relations, and that just spells out how we work together as a board-superintendent team. And then, there are some on the governance process that speak to how the board operates, the structures of the board, and how, what the board rules are, and in that section, we would have things like code of conduct and things like that. The board's role in policy governance is to stay connected to the community. As I said, we've done several community surveys. The last one was a little over a year ago, where we conducted an electronic survey through the thought exchange, and community members could, we gave community members a link, they could log into the link, and they could give us feedback on a series of questions. Then, there was area for them to expand on their responses, and people could then go, other people could go in and read those responses and give them a star or thumbs up, or I don't remember what it was, but it was kind of a, "Yeah, I agree with this" kind of thing. And we ended up with, I want to say, 8,000-some responses altogether, if you added up everybody's response to a response to a response, kind of thing, but that number just astounded us. We have never had that kind of a response to a survey. In the past, we did community forums or meetings with community groups, and typically, it would be that group, and that was it, and there weren't too many people, and so the feedback for the board was pretty limited. We took that thought exchange and compared it to what we have heard from community members in the past, and those didn't change. What the community had believed back in 2010 is the same thing that the community believes now. So, it just reinforced the fact that we're kind of on the same track with the community.
If I may, can we have questions as we go along? Are we sure that we have enough time, or wait?
You can ask them at the time, that's okay. The board also sets policy that guides the district, in other words, the "what," and then assures that the policies are met by monitoring the implementation of those policies, and that's done through the monitoring reports. Evaluation, as I said, is ongoing and public. This is all done in public meetings, and tied to clearly stated goals and objectives. You can see on the roadmap what our goals are, and then underneath that roadmap, there are action plans to help reach those goals. The superintendent is evaluated on performance toward accomplishments of those goals, and not on what happened last week, or personality, or anything like that. This model helps the board focus on governance with an emphasis on organizational vision or strategic vision, rather than interpersonal relationships, provides for a diversity of viewpoints, strategic leadership, rather than administrative detail, so we try really hard, and sometimes, we're way more able to do this than not, and that's to stay out of the weeds. Sometimes, we do tend to wander bunny trail down into the weeds, but we try to stay at the strategic level, because that's what we are supposed to do to be an effective board and an efficient board. Provides for a clear distinction between the board and superintendent roles, and provides for collective, rather than individual, decisions. The board moves forward when the board agrees, at least a majority of the board agrees that we move forward, and then the board speaks with one voice. It provides for future orientation versus a present or a past. So, we're always looking out, rather than down, or out, rather than in, and we believe that it's a proactive, rather than a reactive, form of governance. The superintendent's role is to provide data-driven reports through the monitoring reports to show progress toward achievement of identified goals. This occurs throughout the year. All of the policy governance policies are reviewed on an annual basis, or more frequently as we determine the need to be. The result is that the school board is continually focused on its goals, regular monitoring, and improvement. The superintendent does not have to get specific approval for specific actions. If those actions fall within the fence that we've determined, he doesn't need specific approval for those actions. He does keep us informed, because one of our rules is that there are no surprises. So, he does keep us informed, and, you know, if he's heading, if he and/or the district are heading down one path, he doesn't necessarily want to get crosswise with the board when the board thinks we might need to take a little turn. So, those conversations are always, always ongoing. As I said, the board establishes the parameters or the fence, and the superintendent is responsible for accomplishing the goals that are set for him. And that's it. It's very brief overview. It took us a long time to get to the point where we're all comfortable, at least somewhat comfortable, with policy governance, because it is a different way of governing than what normal boards, what other boards, or, for instance, city councils or other large groups take. But there are, in Washington State, there are over 30 school boards that are using policy, some form of policy governance, our framework is not pure to the framework that was developed by John Carver. His was more of a business model that really fit into a business with a board of directors or nonprofit with a board of directors. It doesn't fit real cleanly into a school system, so we have, you know, taken and added and kind of adjusted as we need to, as we've moved down this path. So, are there any questions? We wanted to provide you with this information so that you know when we have these joint meetings and you come to us and say, you know, "We'd like to do this," the board may not be the right person to ask for that kind of partnership. And so, it was just a way to kind of inform you of how, what format, what framework the board follows.
I think it's helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you, Martha. Next on agenda, we do have developing partnerships. Dr. Arian?
Thank you. I actually have two different documents on board docs that we'll throw up there, and the first one is just a brief slide presentation about one of our operational procedures, so if we could go ahead with that. Operational Procedure 4216, which is titled Community Business Partnerships. I simply took a quote out of that particular operational procedure, because this guides what we do in developing partnerships here in Yakima. And so, you can see the premise that we make here, that when we're talking about partnerships with the Yakima School District, it is based upon the premise that the community and our schools realize that the importance of the work is that we work cooperatively to achieve a particular goal. We have eight principles that drive what it is we do in regards to partnerships, and those are the last two slides. So, the very first one, as you can see, that we state that successful ed partnerships, they first of all, address real problems, you know, whether it be attendance issues or providing opportunities for kids to have different experiences, whatever it may be. Our partnerships take many forms, and our other document that we'll share with you in a minute has, I think, a little over 300 partnerships that we identified at the beginning of the year, so it's not a complete document when we get that far, because it doesn't include some of the partnerships that have been created during the course of this year. But you'll see that we have many different forms of partnerships. The third thing is that, the third principle regarding our successful partnerships is that it is built upon collaboration, conversations, discussion. It is not any one entity saying, "This is the way we're going to do business, and that's the end of things." So, it's, we need to have conversations. Organizations, people, need to have a voice. The fourth thing is that communication, again, is a key, and that we not only communicate with participants, but with the community at large, and later on, we take a look at some of these partnerships, I'll share an example or two of that. On the last slide in my presentation on partnerships, these principles, number five is that we need to have leadership that's provided, that builds commitment and supports these different activities. Number six is to provide the resources, and in some cases, that when we're working with people in the community, we need to provide the technical resources. We many times have people come to the district saying, "Hey, we've got this great idea. Let us come into your school and meet with a group of kids every Tuesday at 1:00." Well, timeout. You know, let's talk about what it is that you're going to, you want to provide, and those kinds of things. If we had that model in place, where we simply let people come to us and do what they wanted to do, there'd probably not be much time left to teach, because we are all the time meeting with people who come to us wanting to do things. So, we have to make sure that we have the leadership, and that we provide the resources, and in some cases, the technical expertise to help some of these groups understand what it is that we do, and the roadmap, if you will, that we've set out for our students. We need to make sure that we evaluate what it is that we do, determine its effectiveness, because if it's not effective, we need to go to Plan B. We're simply not going to continue to do something because we've always done it that way. Then, we need to acknowledge and confront problems. I know that when I meet with groups, I always bring a problem, a situation here in our school system, whether I'm meeting with the members of the faith community, or our ed partnership group, or our superintendent instructional advisory committee, which has a representative from every one of our 22 schools, we make sure that we bring, I make sure that I bring an issue to them, a real issue that's going on in our school system, and give them a voice, and so we do confront problems that we have. But those are the eight principles upon which we build and base our partnerships. The other document, because we're to the end here, she's going to throw it up there, and let me change my document here. This document that you're going to see is simply the, again, the partnerships. Okay, we're going to give you a test right now, and what is number six? No. Anyway, these are listed by the partner, which is, you can see the partnership column, so they're listed alphabetically. And again, these are just all the different partnerships that we had in place at the beginning of this school year, and when she gets to the bottom, I believe the last number is 300 and something. But again, we are continually having people meet with us, talking with us about partnerships. This week alone, I've met with two different groups who've come to us wanting to create a partnership. One partnership I want to share with you that's new, that you're not going to read on here, is, you maybe have heard about the Yakima Mile. The Yakima Mile is actually a part of a national event. There are, you know, the Denver Mile and the New York City Mile, et cetera, where you have professional runners actually competing in these mile-long events, and there's prize money for the professionals, and there's also prize money for those who, I believe, run in at least five of the different national events, and the Yakima Mile is one of those. What we were excited to learn, when there's a group here in town that's bringing that to us, they came to me and had an interest in helping us with our gang prevention program, violence prevention, and so the money that is made in the Yakima Mile next month, those profits come to the Yakima School District for our violence prevention program. They've stepped up and come to us and weren't sure how to help, wanted to know where some of our areas of focus were, and have stepped up to the plate, if you will, and we, in effect, end up with a new source of revenue. Not that, we have no idea how much money that's going to be, but it'll be a new source of revenue, and is earmarked specifically for violence prevention, because we do have a three-pronged model that we've started to implement slowly in pieces, and this gives us a chance to implement more of that particular model. But at your leisure, you can look through this. You know, we're just very pleased to see the number of partners that we have, and as I mentioned, this is just the list from the beginning of the school year, and this week alone, like I said, I've already had a couple other folks come to me about creating relationships with the district. Last week, similar kind of thing. It's not that I get two every week or anything like that, but, you know, springtime, people are looking to see what they want to do for the next year, and so they approach the school district. But partnerships play a key role for us. You know, the kids get the best education possible when it's the community, and the school, and the parents and family working together. No one entity's going to do the best job all by itself. So, we truly rely and actually feel very strongly about the community stepping in and partnering with us, providing resources, which in many cases, that resource is simply the most valuable resource they have, which is their time. It could be mentoring some of our students, for example. But we are very pleased to be able to show, share with you the 300-and-some partnerships that we had at the beginning of this school year, and it's a longer list now, and it appears it's growing week by week. So, that's it on partnerships. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have, as long as they're easy questions.
We would be one of those, right? We're already on the list with our mentorship program?
I'd have to look to make sure that it's on there, but, yeah, if not, we'll get it on there, because we do have that partnership that's been in place, I believe it started a...
Three years.
Yeah, so, and we have high school kids who participate in that, and it's our city council members who serve as mentors to those kids. So, yeah, we'll have to look here, Jennifer, to make sure that it's on there, so.
Opportunity to add another one.
Yes. Are there any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Arian, appreciate that presentation. Next on the agenda, we do have the gang prevention and intervention. Mayor Coffey.
I think I will go ahead and have Sarah Watkins, our Assistant City Attorney, will be giving a PowerPoint that will kind of give an overview of the gang prevention program that we have put into place, the framework which we started with a very modest proviso from the governor's budget last year. Sarah will have, it'll be a seven or eight-minute presentation, and then you'll have questions.
All right. So, just to segue, this is actually one of the partnerships that we have with the school district, and we're thankful for the opportunity to have this partnership for the pilot program piece of our gang reduction intervention task force, which I'll get to in a couple minutes. So, for an overview, as Mr. Moore mentioned, the governor gave the city of Yakima $150,000 to create a sustain...
My voice is pretty loud, but... To create a sustainable program to address gang membership and gang violence in the city of Yakima. And so, the program that we've developed has three main portions. It has the village, the health prevention promoter, and the intervention specialist, with strategic oversight by the steering committee, with help from a coordinator that's been hired, Matt Farabank, who actually is at another meeting about mentoring children, so he should be here shortly, but he wasn't sure, so. The steering committee is the strategic oversight body, and on that steering committee sits a representative of the school district, as well as representatives from comprehensive, from healthcare, from the juvenile justice segment of society, and city council members, and so they have a charter and bylaws and a governance structure. We also have someone from the Yakima Police Department, and someone, we are looking for someone to serve the community representative role still. The village is one of the three prongs, and that is really a coalition of stakeholders. They meet every two months, and the idea is to provide an opportunity for people who are working in this area to collaborate and network so that... are working in this area to collaborate and network so that they can look at gaps in service and evaluate capacity and programming. Stakeholders include school counselors, youth programming providers, healthcare providers, nonprofit organizations, mentoring programs, and interested community members. So the meetings are based and determined by what the coalition members' interests are. So there's usually an education portion at the beginning where someone comes in and gives a talk about a topic that the stakeholders at the previous meeting determined they wanted to hear about. And then there's an opportunity for networking so people can meet with other community service providers or healthcare professionals that they think could help collaborate with their programs. And some of the common themes that have been expressed by stakeholders at these meetings include the need for more resources for youth and their families, more safe spaces available after school, as well as programming after school in those safe spaces, skills building, especially for high school students who will be entering the job market, and collaborating across sectors to make sure that there's kind of more of a one-stop-shop opportunity for kids in programming. So we're not siloing ourselves, but we're collaborating amongst providers. The next meeting's May 29th and any interested person can attend, so I would invite everyone here, if they're interested in what's going on. It is from noon to 2:00 at Comprehensive Mental Health. The second piece of our program is really a prevention strategy and we've taken this on by doing radio interviews, hour-long radio interviews once a week on radio KDNA in Granger. They've been happening since late January and are going through the end of May. And those are really geared towards adults, guardians, parents of children. And we are interviewing people who have information about ACEs, who have information about gang influences and mannerisms, information about youth programming, and information about our program as well as Parks and Rec programming that's available, and summer programs. Those air on Wednesdays and there's a live program once a month where people can call in and ask questions. We also are doing ads on Town Square media platforms that are shorter and more youth geared so that high school or middle school youth can hear on the radio, maybe when they're getting taken to school, just short clips on opportunities that are available to them. So hopefully if something piques their interest, they can ask their parents about it or go online and find out about it themselves. And most of those are about programming and after-school programs that the kids could participate in. And the piece that we partner with the school district on through an MOU is the Yakima Youth Leadership Program. It's a pilot program that we've created that has an intervention strategy associated with it. Our pilot program is very small. It's 10 students, five from Franklin Middle School, five from Lewis and Clark Middle School, both boys and girls are included. And the goal is to have our coach mentor both the students and their families, so their parents, guardians, older siblings, to provide positive modeling, information about resources, education, and opportunities for the family to grow. And the coaching of the students includes information on communication, active listening skills, verbal and nonverbal communication, drug awareness, gang awareness, and conflict resolution. And we're working with sixth graders, so sometimes, especially things like nonverbal communication, they've never really heard of that before. So this is a really good opportunity to have someone coach them on nonverbal communication and how they're presenting themselves. And so the information so far is in less than two months, or approximately two months, 80% of the students who are in the program have improved their grades and their attendance in school. And they're all actively participating in an attendance challenge right now. So I think those are pretty good results for a very short period of time. At the end of the program, at the end of June, we have someone set up to conduct interviews with the students and their parents about the program to get data and analyze and assess the successes and challenges of the pilot program. And we'll also evaluate capacity and scale as well as future collaboration and needs. You know, 10 kids is not a lot for a full-time, sustainable program, but I think it will give us a good idea of what we did well, what we could do better, and how we can do things better in the future and then hopefully use that information to get more grant money, find more partners, and increase the capacity. So we are concentrating on data and strategy and research because the point of the proviso was to create a program and then use that basis to go out and find money. So we have, we've developed the paperwork that we need for a permanent program or a sustainable program. We'll be doing active post-participation interviewing in late June. And we also have a lot of data from the village portion of it. We've done surveys at the end of meetings about what collaborators want to hear about, what they want to see out of a meeting, and things like that. We also have two consultants that we hired. One is from Spokane and she runs a similar school-based program in the Spokane schools and she's been really instrumental in helping us talk through our program as well as a woman from San Francisco State University, who's a researcher, who's going to do the data analyzation and create a final report. And she also helped develop some of the interview questions and things like that so that... We want to make sure that we have accurate data and something that we can provide in a report form that can go out not only to grant writers and grant people, but also the community to see what we did. We also have a youth advisory group. It's very limited. We have two youth on it. They're actually both on our Parks and Recreation Committee as youth members. One is currently a student at Eisenhower and one is a former student at Davis High School. And they've given us feedback as to interview questions as well as their ideas about how there could be peer mentoring or high school youth involved in the program. And finally, we have an intern coming in from Stanford who heard about the program and is originally from Sunnyside and is going to help with the research at the end. So one of the things that is important about our program is it's really geared towards trying to find a sustainable way to move forward. And so we've been looking at funding requests and we're always looking for money right now. And also looking for partners for grant applications where appropriate. And I'm sure there will be opportunities in the future to collaborate with lots of different partners, including the school district, on future grants, on programs that would be beneficial to the school district. And we would enjoy working with school district, you know, to evaluate programming, talk about how we can work together, and apply for grants together. So for our next steps, we're going to evaluate our pilot program and continue working on that as well as continue searching for grants. The city is planning on continuing the village and the steering committee activities through the year. And so we're hoping that the school district will participate in both of those as we move forward. And that's a really quick outline of the program, so if anyone has any questions, I can answer them.
Thank you for the presentation. I'm wondering to the, what degree, to what degree will the district staff be involved in the evaluation and the next, the development of next steps?
So the evaluation is going to be done based on the data we received from like the interviews. And then I think for next steps, my thought is that we would sit down with whomever the school district thinks is the appropriate group of people or person or liaison and talk about, and hopefully it would involve perhaps the principals of the two middle schools that we worked with, and talk about the program as well as talk with our intervention specialist, Mr. Garza, who worked in those schools with those kids. And discuss, you know, how we can move forward and what the best way to do that is and if there are opportunities there. We haven't really thought that part.
Well, I just might add that a school district member is on the steering committee as well that helps set the direction for what data would be collected, how we would go about collecting it, and how it would be analyzed.
Thank you, Sarah. Make sure it's green.
Thank you. Oh, yep. Big difference. Thank you, Sarah, for that presentation. We have had a lot of different positive things coming out of these discussions that we're having around gang prevention and intervention in Yakima, across the state, and within City Hall as well. One of the major factors that we would like to be able to ensure is fully involved is a strong partnership with community members, but also with the Yakima School District and any other service providers that help provide services to youth. We have, as you all learned, a steering committee that has nine positions and we are really trying our best to ensure that this steering committee reflects the needs of the OJJD P model. And so the just...
Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention.
Yeah, it's a federal department. And so we have seen the models be used in other communities across the nation and have learned that the best models include a variety of stakeholders. And so with that, the city council would like to make sure that we understand how to best move forward with the school district. And without knowing if you have a policy around gang prevention intervention, we would like to know how to move forward around a policy because I understand now that you, as a board, have a role to create the strategic vision and the means is actually moved forward and propelled by the superintendent. And so with a policy in place, perhaps, being considered that we can move forward with trying to find out how the superintendent could be a partner to the city on this effort. In particular, we would like to find if it's possible to have a liaison at different schools so that we don't have to rely on one person being shared amongst the different school facilities. We also know that age-appropriate, that it's important to have a person who knows how to work with kids at an age-appropriate level. And so we were wanting to find the steps, we want to know the steps that we should take with the school district to make that ask properly. And secondly, we would love if we could have a representative from the school district at the village meeting on the 29th of this month. It's a group of folks that have been meeting together as described by Sarah, but it's a really large group, actually. We've had about 50 folks or so around that range attending these meetings, from community members who are alarmed by the violence going on between youth to actual professional experts who, their line of work is serving the youth. And so we really would want the school district to bring your level of expertise and your insight and help guide us at the table while we have these discussions. That meeting, again, is on the 29th from noon to 2:00. And this, as these meetings continue to happen, and they're not happening all the time because, again, these are community members and service providers, it's hard to get everybody's calendar free. So they're only happening on a bi-monthly basis, but we would love for the school district to also be present at this, as we move forward because we want to ensure that the vision as it's being created right now includes the voice and insight and wisdom of the school district as well.
If I may, I'll pass that information on to Trevor Green. He's the new superintendent who, as of July 1, will be sitting in this chair. And I don't know if he'll be in town that day or not, but I'll make him aware of that opportunity. And to answer your question, one of the ways is to make sure that we have a voice before the city submits a grant. Because if you submit a grant without our voice and then you come to the school and say, you know, "We'd like to do this," you become like those other entities that I talked about earlier. So we'd simply like to have a voice in the development, if you are interested in pursuing a grant, that we have a voice in the development of that grant. It sounds like you have an interest in doing so, so that'd be great.
I think that's very helpful and I think a wonderful way to do that is to keep the communication open, which we've started and will continue with that.
Thank you. If I could add to that, too, we have submitted a couple of grant applications just to try to ensure that there isn't a gap. We're not 100% certain that the funding will be readily available when this grant funding runs out, but in the meantime, we definitely want to ensure that moving past beyond the summertime, that grant applications have those partnerships clearly identified in those applications. And so the meeting on the 29th can help us clarify who will continue to be a part of this work and this effort on a consistent basis. And in addition, it's maybe possible that perhaps maybe the school district could have some financial opportunities as well that may not be available to the city, like grants and stuff. And so maybe we can talk about that as well with Mr. Green or with both of you while you're still having a transitional period right now. But it would be wonderful to know also how we move forward with identifying folks at different facilities to work with as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah, for that presentation. It's great to hear the initial results of the work that you're doing and that it's really impacting those 10 students in terms of their attendance. It sounds like it's a model that's developing that's going to be effective. And please know, as Dr. Arien mentioned, that, and on behalf of Trevor Green as well, he's met with the city manager and with mayor as well, and has committed to continue the partnership and committed to having those lines of communication and joining together because the issue of gangs, as we know, is everywhere now. It's in our community, it's on the streets, and it's in our schools. And it really does make sense that we collaborate, come together, so that we can address that issue that's in our community, so.
I'd like to add that we're quite proud of the proviso that we did, we're able to get from the governor. And that has led to legislatively, there's half a million dollars that has come up that are available for grants. We do want to partner and work toward having some of that funding also. So there's been a lot of work. I think we need to congratulate those people that have been on the committee. It was very short notice as far as getting that proviso and the funding, but Sarah and deputy mayor have done an excellent job and others as far as putting this together and I'd like to compliment them. I know that the city manager has also done some great outreach as far as getting some other grants, but I think time being what it is, maybe we should move on.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Deputy Mayor, I just want to reiterate that the school district and Trevor Green is committed to partnering with the city council, so.
Wonderful.
Okay. Thank you. That was a great discussion. We're going to move on to our next item, which is youth development. Madam Mayor?
Yes, I will let you go in.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you. We have our Parks and Rec manager, Ken Wilkinson, will step forward and talk a little bit about summer programs and after-school programs. Youth development is one of the strategic priorities of this council that they adopted at their strategic priority retreat earlier in the year. Council has put funding into the Washington Fruit Community Center, the Y-PAL group, and then also with OIC. But we also do some things on our own in terms of our summer programs and after-school programs. Ken will talk a little bit about those and then there's, I think, an ongoing conversation about how the school district and the city could work together.
Thank you, Cliff, and good evening, school board members and city council. I'm Ken Wilkinson. As Cliff mentioned, and with me is Tammy Andringa. She's our recreation supervisor and she has been the supervisor for these two programs that we'll talk about in just a moment for quite a number of years. So I brought her to answer the hard questions that you might have later on. But it is always a privilege to talk about programs that we do in Parks and Rec, especially if they're programs for kids and then when we have partnerships as well. The Beyond the Bell program is a program that we've had for eight years at Roosevelt Elementary School. To talk about partnerships, this is truly a partnership between the school district and the city of Yakima Parks and Recreation Department. The school district provides the space, the school, and then also provides some transportation, which is critical because not only just the kids who go to Roosevelt are able to go to our Beyond the Bell program, which is held at Roosevelt. And I know that that is no easy task to get kids from different places after school. So we appreciate that very much. And we provide the staffing and the programming, the activities that are held there at Roosevelt. Kim Lopez is our recreation coordinator and she directly oversees the program at Roosevelt and she... and she and her staff of seven do a fantastic job of planning all kinds of activities, from recreation to sports, to also arts and crafts. One of the things that I think is really important is the homework assistance. Uh, we know that kids don't always get that great homework assistance at night, especially, you know, if parents are working late, uh, to get that in such a critical component. So, we're so happy that, that we're able to help provide that. We also provide some special event days, like a Valentine's Day party, or an Easter egg hunt, and some of those fun things that, that really make it special for, for kids. Another partnership that we have is with OSPI, Office of the Superintendent of Public Instruction through, uh, the state of Washington, uh, and they provide the snack for us, uh, for those kids at the Beyond the Bell program. I asked Tammy to talk about some of the other partnerships that we have, uh, with this program, and again, shows the great collaborative effort that we, that we are able to provide.
And I just might add, there, the material that Ken's speaking from are in your packets.
Good evening. Um, just a few highlighted ones that we do. We do lots of partnerships and bring people into the Beyond the Bell program and the Summer Playground Program, but, um, a couple of, um, uh, is, uh, monthly cupcakes with the cops. Um, they come in, and they talk about different topics with the kids in the program, um, such as fighting bullying, traffic safety, domestic violence, drugs and alcohol, and also being positive citizens in the community. So, it's just getting them comfortable with the police officers and getting them recognized, and they just come in and kind of mingle with them, um, once a month. We've also had WSU Health and Nutrition students come in, and they've done sessions on healthy eating, nutrition, um, actually making and preparing healthy, fresh snacks while there. And then, during the time that they're out there, they're implementing some physical activities, so trying to incorporate a lot of healthy, living lifestyle activities. Um, just last March, or this past March, we had, uh, Red Cross come in, and they did Passport to Preparedness. And what they do is they come in and they talk to the kids about, obviously, earthquake, um, preparedness, um, floods, snowstorms, lightning storms, and then help them develop, uh, how to b- build a disaster supply kit, basically, telling them what they should have prepared and in a kit in the event of some unforeseen disaster. They also talk a little bit about first aid. Obviously, they can't go through complete first aid, but they talk about real general minor first aid, and how important it is to know that kind of information. Uh, the last one that I want to highlight is, uh, Delta Dental, uh, comes in, um, to our Summer Playground Program, and they actually come in, um, dressed as tooth fairies, with little fairy wings on. It's cute as can be, and, um, they come in and they're just full of energy, and they sit down and read books to the kids, and they bring a bunch of goodies, all kinds of goodie bags, including toothbrush, toothpaste. Um, they also talk about oral health. They give out books that talk about teeth and healthy teeth, and then, like, cinch sacks and backpacks, and the kids just love it. And they will spend a whole day out there, and they come out with a full team, and just really hit on the importance of oral health and hand out those things that a lot of these kids can't, can't get on a daily basis.
So, the Beyond the Bell program serves a hundred and eighteen kids, and we have sixteen junior volunteers. Now, as a, a parent and having kids at that age a long time ago, that's a tough age, eleven to thirteen, what do you do with them? And having them involved in our program as you, as junior, uh, leaders, junior volunteers, is really critical, uh, to that, and they can mentor, and become friends, and help us, 'cause you know it's a handful to do arts and crafts with a hundred and eighteen kids. So, I'll talk briefly about our Summer Playground Program that we host at Kissel Park. A little less of a partnership between the city and with the school district, but again, it is a partnership. The Yakima School District provides the nutrition for our program. We are one of the sites, uh, where your nu- your nutrition program for the school district is, is operated along with a number of other parks, but somewhat of the similar model. There's, uh, Kim and her staff plan all kinds of really great activities, uh, whether it's crafts or the recreation, some sports, some team building as well, and then also a weekly trip to Franklin Pool, which is quite popular with the kids. Uh, that program goes through the summer weeks, when school is not in session, starts right after school ends for the summer, then, then, uh, ends right before your school, school year starts with the school district. So, um, again, there's a junior volunteer program with that. Kim has ten volunteers that help. Uh, it was kind of hot last summer, and we had some smoke, which gave us a few extra challenges, but just another fantastic program that we love to share with anybody, uh, that we can, and, and continue to do great work with, with the kids i- in our community. So, with that, uh, I can feel some questions, and Tammy, here, I, I was hoping Kim could make it, too. I didn't know if she was going to make it or not, but thank you for the opportunity to share, uh, some of the great stuff that, that we're able to provide.
I have a, a couple of questions. Can you tell me zero fee for the parents for the-
Either the after-school or the summer program?
There is. There's a small fee, and I'll, I know we-
I can change them very well.
Yeah, uh, for the after-school program, it's three dollars a day, or forty-nine, fifty-seven a month. And then for the, um, Summer Playground Program, it's sixty dollars total.
I'm sorry, what was that last one?
Sixty dollars total.
For the, for the summer?
Yes.
Okay. And how, um, if you can share this information, what is the, the after-school program in particular, what is, what does it cost to serve a hundred and eighteen kids, just to get an idea of what that looks like?
Total cost to run that program is about a hundred and eleven thousand dollars, and we bring in about forty-nine thousand.
Okay. And so, that, that would be a full school year?
Yes.
After, you know, is it like, three to five, or five, thirty?
Yeah, Monday it's two to six, and on Tuesday through Friday, it's three to six.
Oh. Thank you.
Other questions?
Does the school district provide the, uh, summertime free lunches? And what's the name of that program? That's okay. Okay. And is that the program that's providing the food for, uh, Kissel Park?
Yes, and I, many other locations. I know there's twelve, fifteen locations. Some of them are parks as well. Milroy, I believe, last year was one of them, and, uh, Field Elementary, I, I can't remember all. There's a great long list.
Great. And will be after classes, right?
Thank you. That was a great report. I think we have some comments that we'd like to, to share on that. I think, uh, we'd like to have those programs all over the school district and, uh, all summer, so, but go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, and thank you, uh, Ken, for presenting on this. Um, I had the, the privilege and real, really the, the great pleasure of, uh, going to the Beyond the Bell program, uh, a couple of weeks ago with, uh, school board member, uh, Bonce. I don't know if she was able to share with you guys that we were able to visit. Uh, Ms. Lopez gave us a tour of the program. We stayed there about an hour. Um, and this is just a really wonderful opportunity for kids after school, and the city sees this also as, um, you know, uh, gang prevention and intervention. We see this as youth development as well. Um, and we understand that, um, as youth development, um, uh, go, as far as youth development goes, this is something that the school district and the city, you know, really value. And so, we, um, want to thank the school district for your wonderful partnership, and for, um, your school staff at, um, Roosevelt Elementary School that, um, does what they have to do to accommodate this program. Um, and, um, and so with that, we, um, we know that, as a city, that one program for fifteen thousand kids, um, of the Yakima School District alone, and twenty-five thousand kids across the city is, 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 is just not enough. Um, and we would like to, um, based on the community input that we've been getting through our gang prevention efforts, the village meetings, um, and also through constituents, um, reaching out to their council members, we, we would like to be able to expand this opportunity for more kids at a different school, or at different schools. Um, and so, we would like to know how to move forward with identifying, um, others, other select school buildings to keep open from three to six, or three to seven, if possible. Um, and also, um, we understand that that comes with, um, the need for transportation. And so, we will also need to know how to make that possible and find the logistics around that, so that we can have additional bus transport, um, to, to the, to a different site, if possible. And so, um, we will not, you know, we can't do this on our own. We would need that partnership. Um, and, um, and it's something that we understand, um, is not easy to accommodate, but we also know that i- it really brings a lot of benefits to our community, and the lasting impact and impression on these young kids is, is going to really help build our future, as these kids are our future. And, um, and so, I'm not sure if you all have, um, thought about perhaps other buildings that could be filled with after-school activities, that you know, um, that there could be a staff member to close, um, uh, that building after the, the program ends at the end of the day. Um, but i- if, if, if we could continue those discussions, and we've talked about that before, I, I personally have had a conversation with the superintendent and a council member, Hill, about, um, the school district's desire to have these schools be looked at as community schools. Um, and so, again, the May twenty-ninth village meeting, um, will allow for, uh, more opportunity for the community to discuss, you know, the, the importance of having a facility for some of the floating organizations that don't have their own buildings yet. Um, we know that some, some community organizations do have their own buildings. They may have a church that houses them, they may have a, an actual building that they can afford to lease. Um, and then there's others that have homes, like the Henry Bochamp Community Center, OIC, and YPAL, but there's others that don't have homes, and they are only able to continue and operate, to operate and serve the youth if, if we find a facility, uh, if they find a facility. And so, we would like to help, help coordinate that in, in any way that we can be helpful in. Yes?
We understand that with your tenure coming to an end, a lot of that is, you know, for, for Mr. Green to administer, but we have a sense of urgency on our side, because we were talking about this last summer, and here we are again, coming up to this summer, and with higher temperatures, we tend to see increases in crime, and we, we just really are, we want to do whatever we can to be on equal footing and somewhat deferential to your audience, because you have the facility, which is really the, the, the key piece to any effort. So, we're asking the board if they would go so far as to set policy, or, or maybe talk to us about a policy that's in tandem, so we could do something about this, this summer, rather than waiting until next summer. Um, we think it's too late, too late for Mr. Green to start on July first and start his efforts. Uh, I think the last day of school is, what, June sixteenth?
Something.
Talk to Erian?
I saw that. Um, we did have, I believe, and Ken, correct me if I misspeak here, but I think that we did expand the Beyond the Bell program to a second school a few years ago, and it was our understanding that, uh, it was budgetary issues with the city as to why it didn't stay at that particular school. But, so we are open to, uh, having, uh, additional sites, and in fact, if, for those of you who have, uh, who are familiar with our Violence Prevention Program, uh, the third element of that, uh, I refer to as community schools, but it's keeping our kids involved in positive activities, whether it be educational, recreational, etc., till about six o'clock, uh, every night of the week. And we can only do that as a community. Uh, I don't know that the community can do it alone. I don't think that, you know, or the city can do it alone, or this district can do it alone, but together, I think that we can make that happen. So, that fits actually very nicely with our Violence Prevention Program. The transportation is another issue, uh, because now we're beginning to talk about cab service. If you have one student on this side of town who wants to go to this Beyond the Bell program over here, and we may, that may not be a part of that route, so how do we get the student there unless every bus goes to every school? And, uh, and I've talked to my bus guy over here, but I'm sure that that would, uh, probably impact our transportation budget in some fashion, but that could go away if we simply had more sites. And so, we have sites that are available after school, uh, till five, six o'clock, and then we do have community users coming in, including the Parks Department for their evening programs, for adults in particular, but, uh, we're very interested in creating this community-school approach. We have kids who get off the bus, who got off the bus today, who have to walk through a gang-controlled neighborhood to get home. I mean, that's the reality for some of our kids. And so, what we'd like to do is to provide that safe haven for our kids, and have that be both recreational and academic as well, so our kids don't have to go through that. That is just not right, to put our children in that kind of a situation. So, any kind of a partnership, and we don't, you're right, we don't have to wait. I'm in contact with Trevor on virtually a daily basis, um, you know, the new superintendent, and, uh, but, you know, I'd be happy to engage in conversation as to, you know, what sites the city's interested in expanding to. We will share with you the sites that we believe, uh, would be advantageous to our students, um, and we'll go from there. So, set up a time and we'll meet.
Sounds good.
There's my Bosch right there, Jennifer, and just get a hold of her, get on the counter, and we'll make it happen.
Sounds like it's in capable hands.
Great, and I would just say that, um, if we can get it, get together before the, that village meeting on the twenty-ninth, and that information about what schools could be made available, because what we, what we've experienced at the village is there are, there are organizations that have volunteers that are trying to place them somewhere to provide services. So, if we can marry up your facility and some volunteers, uh, I think everybody wins. You bet.
I think we're leaving it in your hands to set that up.
Uh, Reverend Davis, you had a comment, right?
Yes, uh, as a, as a pastor in this community, I want to thank, uh, Dr. Erian, for two years ago, when the young man got killed between Adams and Washington, some parents came to me and wrote a letter, and he had made an offer to the faith-based community, which I'm a part of. That's my main job as a pastor. And we, uh, have a program every Tuesday and Thursday at Adams, and we, we handle, we see a hundred and fifty parents and their kids. We do parenting, we do gang prevention intervention, that's my specialty. That's what I've done in, for the last fifty years, and we have had great success with that. And I just want to thank Dr. Erian for stepping up to the plate when I came to him with the needs of that community. And the reason why I was late, because we had to go visit the kids, because we are about to do a, a special trip to a Seahawks game. And I wanted them to know that it's important. And what we're doing is, we, the church sponsors everything that they do. And I like what the, the programs that you guys are doing, and if I can be any assistance in helping you guys develop that piece, because we could do more together than separate. It takes a village to raise, and I know, I know what it's like. And I know how these young people are hungry for direction. They are hungry for direction. I've met with some young men from this killing from Easter morning, met with their, with them and their parents. And my church is working with them to bring in programs, to help them, and to do counseling with them, how to get out of the gangs. And it's been, it's gonna be real successful, and I'm excited. And I'm looking forward to working with, and Cliff knows, Mr. Moore knows, because I've been in touch with him, he knows the work that I did in King County, and Thurston, and Tacoma, and that's what it's about. And I just want to thank Dr. Erian for stepping up to the plate and allowing the church to use this to provide that service and keep these kids and their parents safe. And we, we have some great programs that's going on through there. That's what I wanted to say.
Thank you, Reverend Davis. I think Martha had a comment.
I just have a very quick question. Does the Beyond the Bell program extend into the summer, or is it only during the school year?
It is only in the school year. We have our summer program at Kissel Park. We don't have anything in the school during the summer.
Thank you.
I'd like to-
Go ahead.
Oh, I just would like to follow up to, um, Board Member Rice's comment. We would love to have a, a program during the summer, though, and, and, uh, I, I didn't mention that right now. We would, uh, but i- it's part of our vision as well, that not only do we have more after-school opportunities, potentially even Saturday opportunities, but definitely also summer opportunities. So, thank you for reminding me to bring, plug that in.
So, I was just gonna say that we do, um, the summer program is, uh, what Ken would, had mentioned. Um, one of the things that needs to happen is that we need a school or a facility to be available. Um, there are days during the summertime that, uh, temperatures reach over a hundred and five, or, um, and all of the kids, um, will need to go home. There is the, um, the Parks and Rec cannot keep kids, um, in a safe environment, uh, because they're exposed to the environments of- to the environments of the sun and heat. So it's really important to be able to have that partnership during the summertime, to have a school available so that kids could go in and out during those times. Because parents do depend on this as, this is a very, very affordable program. And I, my daughter has participated and the line, people start lining up at 4:00 AM in the morning because they know how important. And so many kids end up on the waiting list because there's only so much capability within this program. And so it would be ideal for us to try to have, and this is why Councilmember Hill suggested that we figure out a way that we could make this happen during this summer. And so I think it would be a good opportunity for us to start, even if it was at a smaller scale as a needs basis, as it, you know, I think that would be ideal for us.
Ms. Rice, I know it's, I'm sorry.
Ms. Rice, I know it's an ambitious ask, but we think it's so important that, I would really push for schools rather than school, but we'd be happy with anything that is an improvement upon last summer where we really didn't have anything. Thank you.
If I can ask Superintendent, if you can review the facilities access policy that the district has, how to request that.
Yeah, we do have, when it comes to our facilities, there's a process that we use. And they're actually, in the operational procedure, there are different types of groups, if you will, and depend upon the groups and who they serve. And of course, if they serve school-aged children who live here in Yakima, they're essentially at the top of the list. And then you get to other groups as well. During the summer, we do have summer cleaning. So, you know, they have their schedules, so we'd have to take a look at schedules. We do have other groups that serve kids here in Yakima as well that use our facilities during the summer. So it's simply a matter of getting together and we do have to implement the particular policy, but we worked with Ken and his staff for years, you know, trying to make facilities available. And I think that we've communicated pretty well over the years. Not that we haven't run into our bumps at times out in schools, things happen, but we were able to work through those issues. So we do have a process, we do follow the process, but serving school-aged kids is our top priority.
Excellent.
Yes. Thank you, Ken, for that presentation. Appreciate it. And I think it's Tammy Wright. Thank you so much. It sounds like there's a lot of opportunity for the district and the city to come together to develop, discuss, and maybe just, you know, develop and implement some programs that are going to benefit.
Sounds like.
Yeah, there's a lot of opportunity and that's the exciting part. Next, I've had, we've asked Dr. Erian to talk about or to highlight some of the Yakima School District recent accomplishments. Dr. Erian?
Thank you. So we do have the PowerPoint presentation of about 11 slides or so. And we just, we pulled out different things that you may or may not be familiar with. So we wanted to share some things with you. You can go to the OSPI website and look at the report card and you can, you know, from there gather all kinds of information about any school, elementary, middle, or high in the state of Washington. So there's a wealth of information. We've kind of gone a little bit different route and maybe shared some information you might know a little bit about, but in some cases, in fact, at the end of this presentation, there might be a surprise that we've kind of held off on. But anyway, the very first slide shows the Yakima Youth Awards that were presented recently. And all the names that are listed there are our young people who were Yakima School District students who were nominated. And those in gold, those are the ones who were actually earned that particular award in that particular area. So you can see that we had a number of students who were nominated for the awards. And then in turn, we had a number of students who actually earned that particular award or won that award. So I wanted to share that with you. The seal of bili literacy is a seal that actually goes on a diploma. And basically, it's the, the state is wanting to recognize students who graduate who are, who've mastered two languages, English and one other. And there's a process, this is a law that's been in place for a few years. And you can see the numbers there for the Yakima School Districts, School Districts, excuse me. We had 712 students who tested to earn up to four credits with the seal on their transcript. And when you talk about testing and having the seal, the test that we're talking about typically is either the Advanced Placement Program or the International Baccalaureate Program. Our kids who take those assessments at the end of the year, if they scored a certain level, universities throughout the land award them credits for free. I mean, it's no other payment or anything like that. So that's when they talk about earning up to four credits. You can see that Davis, this last year, had 182 kids earned the seal on their transcript. Eisenhower, 84, Open Doors, which is a high school program also, had one. Stanton Academy 15 and Yakima Online, the high school part of that program, six. And that, we did have of those 712 students, we had 378 who earned anywhere from one to three credits on their transcript. But also, most importantly, kids who meet the standard of being fluent in two languages, English and one other, they also have the seal of bili literacy placed on their diploma. And that is a significant achievement. When you take a look at our world that's shrinking every day because of technology, it is a benefit for our student or any student to enter, you know, the world of work or life beyond school, being able to master more than one language. So I wanted to share that with you. The next slide shows our graduation results from 2018. And you can see the numbers there that we had 79.5% of our kids graduate in four years, which was an increase from 72.5% the previous year. And in fact, I believe the 79.5% is the highest percentage that we've had since the state's kept this data. We're pretty excited about that. And then in the second bullet, you can see that for Davis and Eisenhower, their graduation rates were significantly higher. That number in the first bullet, the 79.5%, that includes all of our high schools. We have four high schools, as you know. Sometimes people forget about the online school in Stanton Academy, but we do have four high schools. For four high schools, the graduation rate's 79.5. For Davis and Ike, you can see in 2018, for Davis, it was 88.7% and for Eisenhower, it was 84.8%. And this is for students who graduate in four years. And I've got to tell you that our belief is that it's not important if they graduate in four years or not. What's important is that they graduate, whether it takes them four years or five years or six years. You need to enter the world of work these days or go on to post-secondary education with a piece of paper in your hand. Whether it's a diploma or a GED, you need to have a piece of paper. So the state measures this in four years. We keep data on five years and six years because what's important for us is that every kid hopefully will earn a high school diploma. And if not that, they'll go the GED route. Down below, you'll see in that third bullet, the high school credit requirements that now go beyond the traditional core offerings. You can see that CTE, which is our Career and Technical Education, IB, International Baccalaureate, and AP, those are some significant offerings. And our legislature in this last session passed a new law that basically says, when you're in high school and you pass a class, whatever level that was at, you're automatically enrolled in the next level up. You don't get to take the class that I'll refer to as Basket Weaving 101, not that basket weaving's bad, mind you, but you don't get to coast. The idea is if you master this level, you go up a notch. And in fact, I met earlier this week with two representatives from Heritage University. And we have a relationship with them, talking about partnerships for a moment. Our students who participate in college and the high school classes through Heritage, those credits are free. And for our student population, you know, we experience a lot of poverty in our community. For our students to have access to free credits, that is significant. And so in meeting with them, it was not only to reaffirm that commitment, but also to expand the college and the high school offerings through Heritage University. But you can see that we have credit recovery programs and that we have staff, not only our own staff, but staff at universities who work on behalf of our students. And we have partnerships with YVCC, with Heritage, with CWU, with Eastern in terms of providing some student teachers for us, and the list goes on. But I wanted to highlight our graduation results in particular. And you can see that we continue to increase every year. Music programming, this could have been a full sheet of different honors. I simply pulled out two. The first one is the percussion ensemble from Davis High School. They won the WA State Solo and Ensemble Percussion Large Division category, and that's the first ever. That's winning a state title. You know, when we think about winning a state title, we think about the volleyball team or the basketball team, right, going someplace and playing a game and they win. That's what this was about. They won the state title. Happened to be in music, but it was a state title. They had state champions. Down here, you can see that the Eisenhower Marching Band took first place at the Apple Blossom Parade, which is a significant event here in the state of Washington. The best bands traditionally, from throughout the state, high school bands go and compete there. And the Eisenhower High School Band took first place. So we believe that that's significant as well. When it says Superintendent's High School Art Show, the next slide, that's the state superintendent, Chris Reichdahl. They have an art show. And you can see that this year, we had a Davis High School 11th grade student, Rastie Concol, who was selected for one of the six honorable mention pieces. And his teacher is Mr. Lance Johnson. I believe that Rastie, the student, has had pieces that have made it to the superintendent Public Instruction's Art Show each year. I think maybe this might be his third year. So our kids, again, our kids can compete. As I continually tell our board, our kids can compete against anybody. You know, I steal the slogan from the Sprint Corporation, you know, that says that potential is everywhere, but opportunities are not. And that's what we face here in Yakima. Our kids simply don't get the opportunities that kids in other communities get. And so that's what we're trying to do and with the partnerships and such. But you can see here in art that our kids can compete. The CTE Awards, the Career and Technical Education, you can see that on, coming up here later this month, we celebrate CTE as we do every year. Our board hosts a celebration. And these are four CTE students who've competed in our state competitions, and they have finished eighth or higher. And we do the same thing in athletics. Our teams or individual athletes that earn an eighth place finish or higher, we recognize them. Well, we also do that with our CTE students. We had 136 students who finished, and this is a statewide competition. So they went to the state tournament and they finished eighth or higher. Some of those won first place. Some of those are now going to national competition. Every summer, we are flying kids around this nation. There are competitions in Nashville, in Florida, in Texas. We send our kids to those competitions because they've won the state competition. Our kids can compete against anyone. And you can see on this particular slide, we list the different organizations. We have the Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America is one, Health Occupation Student Association, the Technology Student Association, Skills USA, and the Washington Career and Technical Sports Medicine Association. These are highly competitive competitions that they go to, and our kids are successful. They can compete. And we have, thank you for reminding me, Martha, we have middle school kids who go and compete against other middle school kids in the state. And our middle schoolers come back having finished first in their division. Our kids can compete. Potential's everywhere, it's just that the opportunities sometimes are not. Some staff awards we wanted to share with you, the Crystal Apple, that happened a week or so ago. You can see the five staff winners this year. But we have outstanding educators throughout our system. Our people care about kids. And I want to include in that statement our classified employees. You know, for example, our bus drivers. You know, for the kids who get on the bus, that's the first employee they see in the morning. You know, for some of our kids, they didn't have a very good night that night before. They maybe didn't have dinner. You know, maybe things were rough at home. And the first face they see in terms of a school employee the next day is a bus driver. Second employee they see might be somebody in our food service at the school. You know, so you talk about a village, we, when we talk about our school system, it takes everybody, you know, pulling the oar, so to speak, to move the boat forward. But we have some outstanding classified employees. And you can see the five people who were recognized as our classified employees of the year earlier this school year. And then we have Lori Benoit, who's a leadership teacher up at Eisenhower High School. She was named as the High School Activities Advisor of the Year for the state of Washington. A significant achievement by Lori. And if you've ever been in her classroom and watched her interact with kids, if I had half of her energy, I'd, you know, that'd be something else for me. But she is just, she's a go-getter and she does what's right by kids. And I'd like to add one that's not on there that we became aware of here recently. You know, the WIAA takes the state of Washington and divides it up into WIAA areas. And WIAA is the Washington Interscholastic Activities Association. And so in our region, every region in the state, WA region, they select the Athletic Director of the Year. And Bob Stanley from Davis High School was selected for our WIA region as the Athletic Director of the Year. So I want to make sure I mention that for Bob as well. Next are some community connections. We recently reached agreement with GISA Credit Union. We're going to have a, what's the word I'm, I forgot the, for the scoreboard, the video replay, thank you. We'll have a new scoreboard at Zeffel this fall, video scoreboard, kind of like what you see when you go to a pro stadium, like the kids will see, Don, when they go watch the Seahawks play and/or Mariners, whatever. We'll, you know, we'll have a video scoreboard. It'll be run by our students who'll be trained. But we believe that's going to bring some business to Yakima. We're going to be going out and competing for state tournaments. Before this time, we haven't been able to compete very, at least on equal footing with others. You know, we've had, we have the all-weather track. We have the football turf now up there at Zeffel Stadium. So we've got a school district stadium that's ready to go, but we had a, kind of like a 1950's scoreboard that served its purpose, don't get me wrong, but it was time to move on. So we will have a video replay scoreboard, which I believe will become a source of income for the city because we are going to bring people to the city because we plan on bringing events to this city. It's going to be a source of income for the school district because we're going to sell ads on that. I see Kirsten Fitter sitting back here, and she didn't know I was going to do this, but Kirsten played a key role in developing this partnership with GISA. And so I want to acknowledge, raise a hand or something there, Kirsten, there we go. She played the, she was the key player. So when we pass kudos along, they need to go to her. I mentioned earlier tonight, the Virginia Mason Memorial Downtown Yakima Mile. And again, it's scheduled, that's coming up here pretty quick. Hopefully you've all either entered or you've contacted them and expressed your interest in volunteering. They need volunteers. But again, the proceeds from that will go to the Violence Prevention Program in the Yakima School District. And they're insuring, by the way. They have already made assurances that all of our students will run for free. So any of our students who want to participate in the Yakima Mile, cost is not an issue. That will not keep a student out of that, that opportunity. So we're hoping that we have a great turnout. We have publicized it within our district a few times now already. But I want to encourage everybody in the room, if you haven't already signed up, please, they have different divisions. You know, there is that professional division where you can run for money. I'm looking for the hobbling division, so if they have that, I'll be in that one or they'll push a wheelchair or something for me. But we're pretty excited about the Downtown Yakima Mile and very appreciative of Virginia Mason and Hogback Investors for agreeing to support our Violence Prevention Program. And then the faith community, Don already mentioned this. You know, we took the approach that, you know, our faith community can play a key role in our, in our schools. You know, they don't bring religion onto our school grounds. You know, there's that separation of church and state. But these are well-intentioned people. They want to do what's right by kids. And so we've worked very hard as a school district to have all of our schools adopted by the faith community. And at this point in time, with our 22 schools, all but two have been adopted. So we still have a ways to go. But they provide all kinds of wonderful services for our schools and our students and staff. I know a few years ago, we had, at one of our elementary schools, they came in and they remodeled the staff lounge. It was a pretty cool staff lounge. It still is, actually. It was kind of like going into Starbucks almost, you know, kind of thing. So anyway, these folks in the faith community, Don and others, are doing just a great job on behalf of our students and staff.
Dr. Erian?
Yes, ma'am.
What are the two schools that haven't been adopted?
I was afraid you were going to ask me.
I know, it's MLK and Ridgeview.
Oh, I was just, I knew that. There you go.
Thank you.
No, no. That's the way, I mean, church has adopted Ridgeview along with Washington, Davis, Ike. We have like five schools that my church has adopted and MLK is one of them.
So we might be down to one. Our goal is zero.
So Ridgeview might be the only one that hasn't been adopted.
I think he said Ridgeview. So either that or MLK, but one or the other. Yeah. You betcha. Good question. Sorry, I didn't know the answer right off the top of my head. Moving on, the OSPI recognition, and this is new information. Today, I got a series of emails from the state superintendent's office, and they identified for us that we have five schools that are being honored by the state because of their students' academic achievement and the growth in that achievement. You can see that those, see the five schools there, Davis High School, Gilbert Elementary, Hoover Elementary, McClure Elementary, and Nob Hill Elementary. They and other schools throughout the state, we're not the only five schools in the state, but they and other schools in the state that are being recognized, there's going to be a celebration on June 6th in a celebration on June 6th in both Olympia and Spokane, running simultaneously. So, we're going to figure out where we get to send our, our folks, and we're limited to only two people per school, which is unfortunate, but two beats the heck out of one, and one beats the heck out of not earning the award. So, we're, we're pretty excited. I don't know that the board, we put out a press release, Kirsten did earlier this afternoon, so the board maybe saw that, but I wanted to kind of keep it. Typically, that kind of information, when we talk about no surprises with the board, as soon as I got it, I'd type up an email, send it to the board members, and there you go. But tonight, I violated the rule with surprises, and do what you want, I guess, so. But we're, as you can tell, we're, we're pretty excited about that. One of the things that I didn't mention there, and maybe I just went past it, but is, in terms of schools, we also had, Whitney Elementary School was identified earlier this year by the state superintendent's office as a school that's making significant achievement gains, gains. So much so, that they visited Whitney, they wanted to find out what the heck's going on at Whitney Elementary School, because then they go throughout the state, the OSPI staff, and they make these presentations to different staffs in different schools. And, you know, with the message that, I mean, the staffs that show up, they're struggling, and they're looking for answers. And so, at the state, the answer right now the state has, is you need to look into what Whitney Elementary School is doing in the Yakima School District. And so, you know, there are many other awards, recognition, test scores. We only have so much time tonight, but I wanted to highlight some things, and then we're here to answer, if we can, any questions you might have.
Questions?
Thank you, Dr. Erian. I, I have to make a note here that we do have a former CTE student amongst, a student amongst us who competed at the, at the, not only state level, but the national level, and that's none other than council member Mendez.
Yeah, I was telling them that I actually, when I was in high school, had the opportunity to go and compete at a regional level, and also, kind of where I got my love for travel, I was able to go to Texas and also Chicago. So, they were great experiences for me as a young adult, having that opportunity, so.
Yes, awesome. Thank you, yes.
I would just like to say, I think this is a wonderful record of achievement, and particularly the large group awards and other awards, really remarkable.
Yes, thank you. So, moving on in our agenda, we do have Safe Routes to School. Mayor, coffee.
I think, yeah. I think Cliff, you're going to introduce it, but Scott Schaefer is going to be doing the presentation, is that correct?
Well, we've got Scott, and we've got Joan, and we also have Tom. Board members, as you may know, Safe Routes to School has also been adopted by county, by the city as our, as one of their strategic priorities. Part of our responsibility for the Growth Management Act, to ensure that we're compliant, is that we adopt a comprehensive plan. And two years ago, council did adopt a 2040 comprehensive plan. In that plan, there's a bicycle plan, a transit development plan, a highway and street system plan, and also a pedestrian plan. And the pedestrian plan has a number of different components, including Safe Routes to School. So, just last week or so ago, council did ask us to kind of pull together all that information about how all those components fit together, and that information is in your, in your presentation, in your packet today. We do have, I think Joan is going to lead off a little bit and talk very briefly about that, that document, and how all those components fit together, and then we'd like to walk you through, literally walk you through, the Safe Routes to School program.
Thank you.
Hey, I'm Joan Davenport, I'm the Community Development Director, I've been in Yakima for many years.
Joan, is your microphone on?
Okay.
Close to it, though. Outside voice. So, Cliff did a good job of summarizing what the transportation plan is. Tom, if you'll go to the next slide. We're going to talk a little bit about the city of Yakima's components that all support the Safe Routes to School program. I'm specifically going to talk about the transportation plan, which, as Cliff said, forms the city's foundation of transportation planning. The plan, go ahead to the next map. The plan includes, as Cliff said, it was adopted in 2017. It includes a variety of information that guides all of our policy programs related to transportation, and in fact, the state, if you're going to apply for almost any kind of funding, requires that your project be in the transportation plan or the, or the comprehensive plan, so it's a very important and powerful document. We're going to just highlight real quickly three maps out of the comprehensive plan, or the transportation element of the comprehensive plan. This is the pedestrian routes map that's in the transportation plan. It's a little hard to see at this scale, but if you see, the blue lines are the secondary routes, and the orangey lines are the primary routes. So, you'll notice that 40th Avenue, 16th Avenue, Nob Hill, some of you are really busy elementary, are really busy primary arterials are not recognized as principal places for pedestrians. We're trying to encourage pedestrian traffic on the lower-volume roads where possible. It's not always possible. We have a lot of schools in those, along those routes, but where possible, we're encouraging pedestrians to not walk on the busy, high-volume, high-speed routes. Next map. The next map is the bicycle routes map, and it also parallels that idea that, you know, maybe the worst place to ride a bicycle in Yakima's on 40th Avenue, it's still allowed, it's permitted by law, but the bicycle plan, the master plan and the comprehensive plan recognize that we need safer places to ride. Not everybody's a very brave rider. I am not a brave rider, and families are not brave riders. So, we're looking for the green routes instead of the, the primary arterials. And then, one more map we wanted to share with you, the street classifications. The really busy roads are shown in kind of this hollow yellow, and what that means is in the future, those will probably be access-controlled. There will be median barriers, there will be restrictions on left turns, because they are becoming very high-volume, high-speed, high-accident locations. So, the red lines like Fruitvale and Nob Hill, we have tried hard to incorporate facilities for bicycles and pedestrians where possible, and left turns are still allowed. So, we have many miles of streets in the city that have lots of different elements. I am going to hand the microphone to Scott Schaefer, who's the Public Works Director, and he can run through the rest of the data.
Good evening, I'm Scott Schaefer. We'll talk about the Safe Routes to School now. Looking at that packet where we're talking about all the elements, each one of those contributes to support city council's priority for Safe Routes to Schools. But the ones that we have the partnership with the school district is the Safe Routes to School grant program. Now, that's a state program that's run through the Washington State Department of Transportation. It was initiated in 2005, and it really is to increase the number of kids walking and biking to school safely. And it's a competitive grant process, and we've been very successful over the years getting the grants to be able to do various projects. And I think this is probably one of the most important partnerships we have with the school district, and, because I have a personal commitment to making sure it's successful, because I lost my five-year-old nephew when he was hit and killed by a car in the school parking lot at some of you elementary. This was back in 1998, which was prior to these grant programs, but now that I'm the Public Works Director, I'm in a leadership position with this program and working with the school district, I feel we can make a difference in adding more safety elements so that this doesn't happen to any other families that, what we had to go through. So, next slide. So, the first part of this is that some of the information that we ask of the school district is to formulate walking routes, and what IT has done is actually put these up and show each route that the school district has, that they recommend as the routes for the kids to take. Go ahead, next slide. Now, when we talk about Safe Routes to School, most of it is sidewalk issues, or the lack thereof. I cringe when I see photos like that, but that's happening every single school day here in our community. Because, show the next slide. The reason why is staff put together, looking at a half-mile radius around every elementary school. The green indicates existing sidewalks, the red, lack of. There's a lot of red there. And in your packet, we've broken the cost down per school, as far as what the estimated cost would be, just to put in missing sidewalks. Collectively, we're looking over $81 million. Well, this grant program can't support all of that, so there's other elements that we as a city are implementing.
And we have that, that slide also blown up on a, on a poster board over here, and we can leave that for you all, so you can keep that and have a visual reference of where those sidewalks are and where they aren't.
Part of what we do is that we have, you know, Title 12, Title 15, that actually dictates that new development, redevelopment, put in sidewalks as part of frontage improvements. We also have, luckily, council last year passed a Transportation Benefit District, which is funded by a $20 car tab fee. Those are dedicated specifically to sidewalk projects and road improvements, and council has identified those specific projects over the next 20 years. That helps fill in some of that gap as well. Yakima Transit, for the past two years, we've had council approval for policy issues to earmark $100,000 each year to install new sidewalks on transit routes. Now, that obviously increases mobility and safety for transit customers, but also, those are usually the same routes that the kids are taking each and every day. So, once again, that helps fill the gap. We have the Complete Street Policy, which overlooks all modes of transportation, whether it's vehicle, bikes, and pedestrians. We have a $500,000 grant that we're going to spend this year, Transportation Improvement Board Grant, that will address five projects that will actually tie together some existing Safe Route School projects, so we have some connectivity there. Looking at the sidewalks now, the ones that we do have, they're not always in the best condition, and so, in 2017, we brought on two interns to actually physically go out and photograph and document areas of concern. And you can actually click down under these to find out exactly what the issues are, whether it's a tree popping up the sidewalk, tripping hazard, whatever that is, we have that documented. So, as we do these projects, whether it's TBD, Safe Routes to School, or other means, we can actually start to improve this map, and this map actually helps us to prioritize projects as well.
This interactive map is on the city's website, and it's also at a URL just specifically for this project, but we did, we collected a lot of this data for our equity study a couple of years ago, and so, every one of those dots, you can see when Tom's mousing over, there's a photo, or there's a condition, or a statement about the condition of that particular sidewalk.
Okay, next one. Part of the, when we do the grant application, as you guys mentioned earlier, you know, you want the school districts involved early on. We absolutely do that with this type of a grant. We get information from you. Part of what we keep, too, is any pedestrian or bike collisions that have occurred over the years. We use that information to help justify our needs with the grant application. That actually helps us score better sometimes, and then helps prioritize some of the projects as well. Part of the Safe Route, Safe Routes to School, Tom, go ahead and, is crosswalks and other street markings. There's a map of where most of the locations are. My street crew, the Traffic Division, tries to go out every year, at least, to try to freshen up the painting on the crosswalks to make them highly visible. You know, the winter wear on them really deteriorates the paint, but we try to get out there as, as much as we can. We try to do it during like spring break when school's out, and then obviously during summer as well. Another key element of the Safe Routes to School is our traffic safety signs, the flashing reminders of driving 20 miles an hour during an active school zone. We rely heavily on YPD to enforce that. Part of that is to make sure that, you know, just a reminder to drivers to look around at your surroundings and make sure you're not speeding through those, watch where the kids are. One of the things that the city is doing to actually help this as well, is that we implemented a new traffic calming policy last year. That really focuses in on, in the residential areas, when there's a request, if there's even a perceived issue of speeding, we go through and we collect data. This is something we didn't do in the past. It was either we installed speed humps, or we didn't do anything at all. Now, we're going in and evaluating, gathering data, we're putting up flashing radar signs to remind people to slow down, and that information is actually being recorded. And so, we're using that to see if that's making a difference. If not, this program is actually consisted of three elements, education, enforcement, and then engineering something if need be. If, at that point, we actually have to engineer a physical device, we're not just going to go to speed humps. We're going to actually look at other means, such as, you know, maybe a permanent radar sign to remind people. Speed humps, traffic circles, maybe even narrowing the roadways itself to slow traffic down. In the end, it's really just to try to, one, resolve the issue at the lowest level possible, and then try to do what is best for that situation, and with the least disruption to the neighborhood. A lot of times, these neighborhoods are adjacent to a school. Now, we're currently working on a request on Cornell, which I believe is next to Ridgeview, and so, we're trying to get that addressed as soon as possible. We also look at ADA ramps. We have quite a few sidewalks actually within the city that don't have these ramps, so we're going back and retrofitting them as we do all these various projects, the Safe Routes to School projects, or the TBD, or anything to that effect. Streetlights is another important element to make sure that the streets and the routes to school are safe. The city has over, approximately 4,700 streetlights. Our goal has been to replace and upgrade those lights from the current high sodium, high-pressure sodium lights, which has that yellowish hue that actually makes it difficult to see at times, to LED. This came out of the Public Safety Committee meeting a few years back, where we wanted to make an upgrade to LED for various reasons. One, better quality light. Two, to reduce crimes of opportunity. Three, to just give a better sense of security for the neighborhoods, and then finally, to reduce energy costs. LED lights are known to reduce energy costs by 50 to 60 percent. So, with that, the city went into a program with the Department of Enterprise Services in 2017. They actually helped municipalities do these types of projects, where they ensure cost savings, and they also help you with getting grants with Commerce, which we did, and then incentives with Pacific Power. They provide the contractor, they give you an estimate as how much it's going to cost. Our project was quoted as $2.4 million. So, we went out, bonded for this, and we proceeded. We got about halfway through this, when all of a sudden, we were told that we had a LNI regulatory issue that was overlooked by the contractor. That little oops was a $1.7 million increase to the overall cost. Now, remember, we're halfway into the project already at that time. Yes?
Can I ask what the LNI issue was?
The LNI issue was, is basically an overreach by LNI. Look, there's, there's various utility poles that we have, the ones that we own, the wood poles, and then the ones that Pacific Power own, and that we have lights on. They were requesting more disconnect for safety purposes that went beyond what was actually needed, which increased the cost, like I said, by $1.7 million. It took House Bill 1594, which was just signed by the governor last month, to remove most of those requirements. So, that allows us to proceed and save over $1 million on our project. So, we hope to start that up in a couple of weeks and get this finished within the next couple of months, because we want to make sure that those early morning, dark days, when it's fall and winter, we can have visibility for those kids going to and from Now, the school district, as I pointed out earlier, you know, giving a, you know, recommended routes to schools is part of your role, as well as, you know, education and encouragement as well. Next slide, Tom. And part of that is also gathering data, which you give to us as part of the grant application. application. This is Garfield Elementary, which, it really tells us how the kids are arriving to and from school, whether they're being dropped off by a vehicle, or walking, or biking. One of the most important things that we actually get from you guys is the observational notes that we get from teachers and parents that are out there actually seeing some of this stuff. So we get a real sense of what the issues are so that we can get a better define of scope of work and hopefully get that resolved. Now, one of the non-infrastructureal programs that the schools could implement, I don't know if the school district does, is what's called a walking school bus. This is where you have a safety officer escorting a group of kids through the neighborhood to and from school to make sure that they're safe. And working with the school district, we have found and heard what your greatest needs that you feel are as far as safety. And those are the next three projects that we intend to apply for in the next grant cycle, which is for the 2020 cycle. And that's for Hoover Elementary, Nob Hill Elementary, and then also Robertson Elementary. And at this time, I want to turn this over to Bob DeGrosseleire, he's our chief engineer, just to talk briefly about some of the projects that we've been working on and will be working on.
Thanks, Scott, and good evening, everybody. I just wondered, we'll see what slide we've got coming up here next, Tom. It was discussed earlier today that, or this evening, that we have, there's eighty-one million dollars' worth of sidewalks that can be put in if we filled in all of the areas and all the buffer zones around each of the schools. That's a huge undertaking to do that, and that's just our city, let alone across the whole state, where we've been getting a lot of our Safe Routes to School and Complete Streets money from outside of the city. We have been putting in for and been getting about two million dollars, or two million dollars per application cycle. And we've got our next couple coming up, would be another two million dollars. So we keep putting in for it, and we keep getting a little bit, and we keep chipping away. Next slide, please. Scott touched on working with the school district as far as providing, getting information that we would put our applications together, which is part of the process to compete. Dr. Irian was talking about competition, as is the same thing when we put up for grants. There's a lot of people across the entire state that are putting in for a limited amount of dollars. And so when we put it together, we use the information provided by the schools, parents and teachers that help out, city staff has also helped out on the observations to build a better grant application. Is there more? Okay. Just the last thing, we've got, like I say, we have a couple of pending grant applications out now that we should find out in June for McKinley and for Eightieth Avenue. That's up in the West Valley School District, but it's, you know, within the school districts inside the city of Yakima are all good. Some of the work we did with, recently, Adams Elementary and Washington Middle School, we put sidewalks around that area, and then one of the flashers, they had two flashers on Fair Avenue. We spread those out a little bit to have a little bit better effective area and a broader area of effect on that, and have been working on that. Garfield is coming up this summer. We also have a hearing for, we're also changing some of the streets along that school, which is not a big dollar deal, but it is a safety thing, to have where people drop off their kids on the appropriate side of the street and reduce some of the amount of two-way traffic on some of those roadways on Drummond Fairbanks. That will work out well. And then we're working on, right away now, for McClure School, which was awarded last year, and we anticipate building that next summer. We've been trying to, instead of having the contractors mixing with students during the school time, and trying to eliminate any temptation of scratching a name or something or a footprint into the sidewalk, we do that during the summer, so there's less temptation, but it's often tempting, so. That's all I have. And like Cliff said, this map is up here, shows each of the schools, the two different, we have some overlap. We have a Complete Streets program and the Safe Routes to School program, so they both benefit not only the schools, but any pedestrians in the areas. Thank you.
So as we look at that, that's how everything's coming together to make our community safer.
Thank you. You've done an outstanding job in this presentation, and I think that we are going to have the deputy mayor, Cataras, kind of wrap this up. A lot of, all of this has come out of the Public Safety Committee, which she is chair of, and I'll go ahead and let you start on that.
Thank you. Councilmember Funk.
I was just going to say, so I think the engineer's message is that the opportunity for cooperation is to get more data from those classroom surveys and from parent participation. The more numbers we get, the more competitive are the grant applications, and I think that's a message that parents would really value.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Funk. And on that note, as it was mentioned before, this is a priority for the city right now at this time, and the figure of eighty-one million dollars has been shared for a citywide approach, which is what we want to do. We want a citywide approach that doesn't leave any elementary school out. And so we need to have, you know, efficient information and partnerships and input from the initial planning phase of this entire project. And so while we've talked about a few different areas of focus that we actually identified in a letter to the school district last year, we were able to figure out specifically amongst those area of focuses where the city was able to make progress on those areas. And we were also able to identify specific components that we would need help from the school district on, because it's information that we don't have direct access to. And so among those things are five specific identified needs. First, the percentage and the number of students for mode of transportation to and from schools for each of the elementary school. This data is collected for each grant application, but it would also be helpful in prioritizing a citywide planning project. The reason why this is really important for us is because through all of our, for all of our strategic priorities, including this one, we want to also ensure that there's equity in the planning approach that we create. And so knowing the difference between an elementary school where only twenty percent of students may walk to school versus a school with, where maybe ninety percent of the kids walk to school, that's information that is valuable for us, so we can develop a matrix of prioritization. Secondly, the percentage and number of students bused from one school to another school, because we know as well that there may be, for example, students who go to Gilbert Elementary School but actually live maybe in the area around Adams or Garfield Elementary School, they get bused to Gilbert. And so we would like to know what those numbers look like, so that we can take into consideration as well the kids that are walking not only to the school, but walking to catch their bus to get to their school, because their safety is equally important. And third, we know that the, we have a list of major bus stops from the school district website, and also thank you, Mr. Irian, for giving us a compilation of those bus stops. That was very helpful. We're interested in a map of those bus routes, if there is one, potentially, we could have a copy of that to not reinvent the wheel, so to speak. And fourth, we are interested in getting updated data on recommended school routes, including crossguard locations, because the last data the city has is from 2011. And so we know that things change in a matter of eight years. So that's also helpful for us in the creation of this plan. And lastly, we'd like to know if there's a walking school bus program. And one of the models that we've seen and use in other communities across the nation, school districts may propose or encourage specific walking routes. And if the school district here in Yakima has one of those, then we want to make sure that we are also giving priority to those encouraged walking routes as well. If not, is there a plan to develop such a program? And perhaps maybe this could be the point where we could discuss on how that plan can work best for the anticipated project of the city, but also for the student body of the school district, because this is really who it's for, the most vulnerable population of our community, our small children walking to school without any adult supervision. So thank you.
Thank you. So, locked there. Some ideas and some thoughts, considerations for you to take in mind?
I should have asked if there are any questions.
I think...
One of the things that we would suggest is, I know, for example, there's an evening meeting coming up at Garfield Elementary School because of the one-way changes being proposed, and that's a great meeting. We'd like to encourage the city, anytime you're thinking about things that will affect the school in some fashion, contact the principal. Now, our principal plans on attending that meeting that night, but the only reason we knew about the meeting was because our folks who take care of facility stuff contacted the school to say the city's going to use your gym that night for a meeting, and here's the meeting. So if we can just have a conversation with your folks so that he can be there, in this case, Garfield, and maybe if appropriate, speak on behalf of what's being proposed, because there will be some people there that night who know the principal, and, you know, it might be helpful, so to speak.
Be very helpful.
So, yeah, if you can just get our principals involved in those kinds of meetings, whether it be transportation or gang stuff, or whatever it may be when you have these...
Absolutely.
...you know, city meetings in the schools.
Yeah.
Contact the school.
Yeah, that's actually a perfect approach, and in particular with Garfield Elementary as an example, Mr. Brownlow was the initiator of this request. It's his, I believe, second year at the school, and he reached out to Public Works, as well as to myself, as the district representative, and made that request. It was one of the things he identified immediately as a safety issue. And so that trust that the student body and their families have in that principal is much greater than they probably have in the city, and so it is important to have the principals and educators there. So thank you for that reminder, and I expect Mr. Brownlow will be very active in that meeting.
Thank you for that presentation, Madam Mayor. That was a very informative presentation, and I have to say that I've gained a lot of information about, you know, what it takes to, for safe routes to schools. And so please know that, and maybe I'm, maybe I'm not, or maybe I am speaking on behalf of the board, but for myself, the information was presented today is going to inform our policymaking and consideration going forward. So we appreciate the information.
Do you have a question?
Yes.
Does the school have a capital improvement plan for their buildings? And if so, could we also get a copy of that? Because that would be very useful as we move forward and prioritize with sidewalks, as that's part of infrastructure that would go along with new buildings or redevelopment of possible new schools. A thought?
Yes. Okay.
Okay.
Next on our agenda, we do have a discussion, a brief discussion on the U.S. Census 2020. I've asked Board Member Rice to speak on that, and also Reverend Davis might have some remarks as well.
Thank you, Raymond. As we all know, the census is coming up next year, and you'd have to be probably under a rock not to know how important it is that everyone in our community participate in that census. I don't know what the outcome of the litigation is going to be with that question that they want to add to the census, but regardless, we know that in the school district, the census determines a lot about what kind of resources are available to us from the federal government, what kind of resources are available to us through grants from different entities, what kind of information is we are able to gather about our families. And we know also that there are families that, for any number of reasons, choose, either choose not to or don't want to participate in the census. And I would hope that we, as the school district and you, as the city, could maybe partner with some messaging to the community about how important it is that they participate in the census, what kind of value that brings to each, all of us, together collectively. And I think that there are a lot of folks that don't understand why it's important that they participate in the census. I know that the National School Board Association has a nationwide push to get that, to get messaging information out. I would expect that your national association, whatever it is, probably has something similar. But I would hope that we could partner together to develop some kind of messaging to get out to our community early, early on, and not wait until, you know, a week before the census comes out, just to let folks know how important it is. I don't know, Don, do you have anything to add?
Yes. I was in Philadelphia for the National School Board Association, and they did a workshop on the Census 2020, especially for schools, because it is important for schools. And one thing that they stressed is that the school district and the school board should encourage community involvement, opening the schools from March 2020 to June 2020 to go online, to have committees, to have the students represent their families in counting them. And also, it helps the city with the counting, too, and have faith-based. What better way to get an accurate count in? To let them be, let those who may not want to count their kids, because that's been the biggest problem, families not wanting to put their kids on the census, and tell them and show them the benefit of having their kids on this. And I'm waiting on some information from a presentation that's going to be done at Naleo on June 20th and 20th through to 22nd, and they're going to forward it to me. And once I get that information, I'm going to share it with the board, as well as the community, the faith-based community, organizations, because those of us who have contact with these individuals need to have this information to make sure that every child, every child, every child is counted, because it helps the schools. That's how we can get more funding. It helps the schools. Not only that, it helps the infrastructure of the city in the county. So we have to come together, and soon as I get that information, because they was streamlining it, and that question that everybody's been worrying about for immigrants and migrants, that's not going to be on there. It's not going to be on there, so it won't be any fear. But the best thing to do is have, like our migrant workers who work with these families, deal with that, because they trust them. Have people that they trust help them fill it out, and then we will be a new beginning. It will be a new beginning if we do it the right way. And soon as I get that information, I will share it with you, Cliff, and you can transmit it to the council and to the president, I will do that also.
Thank you, Reverend Davis.
I just might note that council has been briefed by, the governor's office has set up a complete count committee representative. That person did come over and brief council on the process and the timing and the need to communicate to the community the importance of the census. The city does participate always in the census. We provide all the data related to addresses, especially related to new construction. There is a local complete count committee. Laura Armstrong from La Casa Hogar is leading that committee. If you haven't had an opportunity to get briefed by Laura, that might be a good thing. She also, earlier this week, she ran a meeting down in Granger for the Lower Valley. That meeting is also going to be replicated up here in Yakima in the near future. So I don't have the date for that, but I'll make sure that you get it when we learn that.
Laura has been in contact with Naleo. Laura has been in contact with Naleo, and they're going to get that brief.
Great.
Skip that day out so that we can all be on the same page.
Thank you. Next, we'd like to hear your thoughts, your ideas about next meeting, or next meetings. So does anybody have any thoughts about that, where we, what do we do moving forward?
I have some thoughts on it. I think today's meetings, for the ones that I have been to, as far as the joint meetings, has been the most productive. I look to you as far as some of your input, but I think we've kind of come to a point where we can be much more specific as far as what we're looking at, what we're looking for, and where we want to go. And I think there were some specific requests today that should be incorporated into a letter back and forth. And so I would hope that we don't wait too long for our next meeting because I think we want to have some of those questions answered and come together with some, some way to bridge some of the gaps that perhaps have been there in the past and move forward united in our approach to our youth in this city. So that would be my suggestion.
Madam Mayor, I too would like, I'd like to thank the Yakima School Board and Superintendent for allowing us to be here, and I also echo Mayor Coffee's sentiments about what a productive meeting this has been. I would also like to suggest that we possibly could consider having another joint board meeting within the next three months. I think that it's really important to get the new superintendent, Trevor Green, on board with some of these priorities that the school board, but also the council has prioritized, and so I think that it's important to be able to get him in the loop as soon as possible.
Well, it sounds like we're going to, we'll meet in three months. The mayor and I will work together to coordinate a meeting and so we can continue the energy, the great energy that we've created today. So, well, thank you for that. So that brings us to the end of our agenda. What I'd like to do, I'd just like to take just a few more minutes of your time and open this up for just some quick comments from the council or board members. Also, we'd like to hear maybe some closing remarks from Cliff and also Dr. Irian, and then I will turn it over to our mayor, who will adjourn our meeting. So any council members or board members would like to make any remarks? Yes, sir.
I apologize. I need to leave to pick my father up from another appointment. So I'll be brief, and I need to leave. But first, I'd like to thank Dr. Irian for his long career, and I don't know if we'll see you again in this capacity, but we wish you well. And I look forward, we know that without a doubt we'll have some council members that won't be in the next composition of council, but we know that at least three of us will definitely be here, and we hope for a rigorous relationship with the school district. And we really want to make sure that we're saying yes to your needs as much as we're asking you to say yes to ours. Without a doubt, I think, from both of our perspectives, something that's always popular policy with our constituents is what takes care of the kids. And many of us either have had kids in the Yakima School District or work as school administrators ourselves or have some relationship with students, particularly disadvantaged youth. And I also wanted to applaud the increase in graduation rates over five years. That was really astounding to me and really exciting. So you've done great work.
Any other comments? Martha?
I just have a question. The city presentations that were in the packet, are those going to be available, that we could load them onto board docs?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll get those too, yes.
And vice versa? For our records?
Yes.
Our documents?
Yes.
President Navarro, I'd also like to thank Mr. Irian for just, you're welcome, you've always welcomed us and your embrace for our ideas and your service, many, many years of public service, not just in Yakima, across the nation, and I know, across the state. And also to this board as well for being open to something new, a new venture, right? We were all a little unsure of what this would look like, but we've seemed to matured the relationship on an annual basis when we meet, and that has allowed us to get to know each other's priorities, but also be more efficient when, when working for the public at large. So thank you so much for, for that partnership and for your embrace.
Any other comments? If not, Mr. Moore?
Well, I also want to wish Jack the best. You've been a long career, distinguished career here in the state, and the most fun is yet to come. So I'm happy for you and a little envious, but I wish you all the well, all the best. But before you go, you and I have a meeting on May 22nd at 3:00. Already scheduled, so I'll be here. Yep, she gave us the heads up, so thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to just remind folks that Rotary International is on the verge of eliminating polio from the earth. And I use it as an example because I believe that when you bring people together to work on something, what you can accomplish is monumental. I believe that if we work together, we can rid our town of violence. I firmly believe that. I believe that if we work together, we can rid our town of homelessness. I believe we can accomplish anything. And I use Rotary International, I mean, when you think about it, ridding the earth of a disease, the earth of a disease? I mean, if you would have asked anybody that five or maybe even two years ago, you know, that's not possible. As a community, if we work together, we can accomplish anything. And so I appreciate the, the conversation that we've had here this evening, the spirit that everybody brought to the table tonight, and, and you're going to enjoy working with Trevor when he gets here. And just know that I'll be rooting from the, from the sidelines, but we need to continue to work together and, and make some differences here in our community, and we can do that. Just use Rotary as international, it's kind of our guiding light, if you will, in terms of, you know, can you do it? The answer is yes, we can. So thank you.
Thank you. Once again, thank, I want to thank the city council, the city manager, the city staff, even the Yakima School District staff for being here as well. This was an awesome meeting, and I just feel the excitement in terms of moving forward and our partnership. As Dr. Irian mentioned, together we can make a difference and continue to do, tackle out those, those difficulty, you know, challenges in our community and really make a difference for not only our kids but all those in our community. So, Madam Mayor?
I would echo that, and I will, thank you for reminding me. I would echo those feelings and also would adjourn this meeting. And for the city council, I will adjourn it to the regular meeting on May 21st, 2019, at 5:30 at city, at the city council chambers. So thank you, we are adjourned.